This meeting of the Starford Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Alderman Vaughn will open to send a word of prayer and we will observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our God and our Father, and our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, your only begotten, beloved Son that was born over Virgin Mary, chose him as his earthly father who you allowed to be crucified, died and buried in a borrowed tomb, because you knew in three days that you would bring your Son back to you and sit at the right hand of you to make intersection for us. Father God, now here's a Daniel, few handmade servants, handmade servants that were elected by this city. Father, this man is bored, we pray now, God, that you will bless us. You will direct our throats, you will direct our minds. Lord, most of all, we ask you to please give us of all our sins to make us worthy to be standing here, knowing all the time that we can't do nothing. We still fill the rags in your sight. I pray now that you will create us a clean heart and renew the right spirit back in us, our spirit that will be honest and true with our decisions that we make. We pray now, God, that you will fill this plate with your Spirit, that each and one of us will conduct our self decent and order, that each and one of us will, Father, find a way to be on one accord, but, Lord, that in every decision that we make, it will glorify you and that heaven and family. Every decision that we make, Lord, it will be pleasing to the citizens of Starville. We give all praise and honor and glory to you, Father God, because of who you are and where you are. We thank you so much for controlling our destiny. Thank you for not leaving us in the hand of no man. Lord, it is in Jesus' name that we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
You have before you a copy of the written agenda. Are there any proposed changes to the agendas or is Alderman Lynn?
Thank you so much. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. I am requesting items F and G, items A and B on page four. Be moved to Mayor's Business as items F and G.
Page?
Uh huh. Page four under Planning. The items are A and B.
Okay, so that would be items 11, B to A and B as follows. Discussing consideration of the request will TP 16-11 and discussing consideration of LW 16-04. Your proposed revision is to reorder the agenda. Where are under Mayor's Business would you like it?
Add those on the E and we can order those as F and G.
All right. So proposal would be reorder the agenda, replace those items at the end of Mayor's Business. They would be items F and G.
Yes.
Alderman Lynn, has any further provision?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear an objection? An objection, an objection, an objection saying none. Please note the change in the order of your agenda. Alderman Lynn, do you have further provision?
Yes, I do. I'm requesting the following items be added to Board Business, and that is item number four on page three under Airport.
All right, so that's a request for approval for this additional airport owner operator liability insurance.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. On page four, item C under Planning, be added to Board's Business.
All right. That is discussing consideration of approval for private facilities.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Item one and numbers one and two under Engineering be added to Board Business.
All right. That is request for approval to add streets in 26 page three approval list and request for approval to construct a fence at the north side of the Zane Lane.
Yes.
All right.
Page number five under Fire Department, items one, two, three, and four be added under Board Business.
That is a request for approval to issue a commercial grant agreement, request for authorization to apply for a firehouse sub script, request for permission for Chief Charles Yarborough to attend the Firehouse Expo, and request for approval of the purchase of firefighter curragi.
Yes.
All right. All right.
Page number six under Personnel, items number three, four, five, six under Board Business.
All right. That is request for authorization to advertise vacant position of operator one in Brickwater Division, request for authorization to advertise position of lead line foreman in the Starford Electric Department, request for approval to hire Michael Reese to fill vacant position of foreman, request for authorization to advertise vacant position of sergeant in the Police Department. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. All right.
Item, page six again, under Police Department, items number one and number three under Board Business.
All right. That is a request for approval to transfer 2004 Crown Vic from Airport UBS to the emergency park, request for approval to enter into an agreement between the Office of Highway Safety and the area of 100 percent reimbursable grant.
Yes.
All right. Appreciate it.
Okay. And page seven, number four under Police Department, move that to Board Business.
Is that?
That is item number four.
That's a request for approval to enter into an agreement between the Office of Highway Safety and the area of 100 percent reimbursable grant, the amount of $19,769 for overtime and funding for Eliola.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Page seven, under Sanitation Department, item number one to Board Business.
All right. That is a request for approval of travel for Emma Gandhi and Courtney Rawls to attend the Class One rubbish landfill certification training in Jackson.
Yes.
All right.
And my last two requests are items number three and four under Utilities, page seven under Board Business.
That is a request for approval for Terry Kemp to travel to Franklin, Tennessee, and a request for approval for Robbie Gilliland and Joel Murphy to travel to Jackson, Tennessee. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So your proposal is to move all those items to Board Business. Where would you like them?
Okay. I would like those at the beginning of Board Business.
All right. So these items would start as follows as items A and they would go until the last item, which is item 11, L4, request for approval for Robbie Gilliland and Joel Murphy, and then items that were listed on the agenda as A, B, and C under Board Business would follow that.
Yes.
All right. So the proposed revision is to add the following items to the beginning of Board Business. That is item 11, A, four, item 11, B, two, C, item 11, D, one, item 11, D, two, item 11, F, one, item 11, F, two, item 11, F, three, item 11, F, four, item 11, I, three, item 11, I, four, item 11, I, five, item 11, I, six, item 11, J, one, item 11, J, three, item 11, J, four, or, oh, yeah, item 11, J, four, item 11, K, one, item 11, L, three, and item 11, L, four. Alderman Lynn, has any further provision?
Yes.
Do I hear an objection? An objection, an objection, an objection saying none. Please note the change. Alderman Lynn, do you have further provision?
No, I don't. Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the board.
Are there any further proposed provisions within the members of the board? Any further proposed provision? Any further proposed provision? Any further proposed provision? Saying none, do I hear motion to approve the agenda is revised? Motion to be made, Vaughn, a little bit of approve the agenda is revised, do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, Vaughn, Alderman Lynn, all the members of Spiegel, Mayor.
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion further passed. You now have before you a consideration of the minutes of the July 5th, 2016 meeting of the Mayor's Board of Aldermen. Discussion.
Move approval?
Motion has been made, Vaughn, the Mayor to approve of the minutes of the July 5th, 2016 meeting of the Mayor's Board of Aldermen of the City of Starford, Mississippi, incorporating any and all changes recommended by the City Attorney, otherwise as presented. Alderman Lynn, does that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, Alderman Lynn, all the members of Spiegel, Mayor.
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion further passed. We'll now move to announcements and comments by the Mayor and members of the board, and I have one tonight, and that is to introduce our newest employee, Ms. Emily Corbin. Emily is a new Assistant Planner in the Community Development Department, and she is originally from Tupelo, Mississippi, and is graduate of Tupelo High School. She receives a Bachelor of Arts in Public Policy from the University of Mississippi and a Master's in City and Regional Planning from the University of Memphis. Emily is the daughter of Steve and Kathy Corbin. She has one sister, Claire Corbin, and one brother, Webb Corbin. She enjoys yoga, running, traveling, and spending time with her cat, Axe. Please join me in welcoming Emily. Comments by the members of the board? Any comments by the members of the board? Alderman Lynn?
Will you please come forward for me? Captain Outlaw.
Yes, ma'am.
If you will, just help us out at the board meeting by going over all of the locations for the Police Department and give us their hours, that they are operational.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Vice Mayor, board, we've got the Sportsplex, which is 24 hours. That's where the patrol and dispatchers are. We've got the Louisville Street, Lynn Spruil area, which is eight to five. We've got City Hall here, which is eight to five.
Okay.
We've got the Alpha Perkins, which is also eight to five.
Okay. Thank you so much, and let me say this. My worst fear came true because I always wanted all of us to be together as one unit because I know that when we have all of these different locations, it causes confusion for the public, and that's what it has done here in our city. Now, let me say this. I learned, I think it was on July the 6th, that there had been a change in the telephone number to the Police Department.
Yes, ma'am.
That's when I learned that information, and I actually had to learn it from someone calling because a family member of theirs was in a crisis and came to our city and went to the PD and had been calling all morning, and the telephone number had changed. I must admit, and even if he were chief, I would say what I'm about to say now, I was shocked. So can you tell us as a board what happened, that the number had to change and what has happened since then, so the public will be abreast of what the number is for the Police Department?
Well, the telephones that were at the Police Department were outdated.
Uh huh.
So when we left Police Department, we had to upgrade the phones. We didn't have any choice. With, let me, I'm not an IT person, the phones that were upgraded to are the VoIP phones, voice over internet phones. To get those phones and to get the numbers transferred, they had to start out with, I guess what you would call dummy numbers. And the timeframe that the transfer happened, we weren't able to get our regular 323413134 operational before we moved.
Okay. Are all of those numbers operational now?
Uh.
Including the line for the chief?
No, it's not.
Okay. So chief line is not operational, but the other lines are back operational?
The Police Department lines.
Okay. Now, let me ask you this.
Yes, ma'am.
The Police Department's number became 6622684660. As a public, can they use that number now?
Um.
Because that's what you all put on your Facebook page.
Right.
Uh huh.
Since then, we've changed to the 4131.
Uh huh.
So I would say, no, that number is not operational anymore. It, once it transfers, I think it's pushed back.
Okay. And just for the record, when the numbers changed at the Police Department, and I already know the answer to this, if the public called, although those lines were no longer operational, they were just ringing, did it give you the new telephone number?
Okay.
Did it, would it give the person the new telephone number?
Uh, I don't think it did.
It didn't give you that? Okay. Now, so we got all of that done. Thank you so much. I just wanted to clear that up because as an Alderman, I didn't get that information, and I understand, we didn't get that information, so we, I had no knowledge that the Police Department had changed, and when one of my constituents called me, is in a crisis.
Absolutely.
For a relative that's in another town who has to come to our city and see a piece of paper giving the new number, that concerned me. And of course, I called chief. So I just wanted the other members of the board, in case they didn't know that, to know that tonight. Now, onto something good, and thank you for your service, and thank you for the service of Chief Nichols. Lieutenant Rob Robinson spoke last Monday at my home church out there on Rock Hill Road. Pastor Christopher Mace did what was called a youth roundup to begin the youth, to become familiar with the police officers and know that they are supposed to respect them no matter what. So he spoke to about 50 children, and that image was captured, and they put it on the Facebook page for that church. Please tell him that I said thank him so much and thank him for his service.
Absolutely.
And I have one more question to ask.
Yes, ma'am.
I spoke about this at the last board meeting, to Cornerstone was here, and it is an article dated June 18, 2016, in the Clarion Ledger, and it starts out and it says, Dear Legislature, please return our $7.4 million. Sincerely, Police Chiefs. And it got my attention because it said sincerely Police Chief. And our city stood to lose $262,987, according to this article, from the wireless fund used for communication purposes. Have you all received that money back yet, or do you know?
Um, it hadn't hit the account the last I checked with Lieutenant Word. There's a company called Magic that has to go through them first, and it's up to them when they release the funds.
Okay. I was just curious because we had an item on the agenda last time that you all are going to use these funds, so we want to make sure that we get them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. I yield the floor this time. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
Any further comments by the members of the board? Any further comments by the members? Any further comments?
I got one, Mayor. I do not want to note that that last, the use of those funds, when we passed that resolution, we did state that they could not be used or spent until the money hit the account, so there was no risk there for the city.
Fine. Thank you. And I knew that. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Any further comments by the members of the board? Any further comments? Any further comments? Saying none, we'll move to citizen comments. This time, any citizen who wishes to make comments, citizen, when you did feel about coming forward, introducing yourself, and if we recognize the speech for a maximum of three minutes.
Good evening to the men and board. My name is Alvin Tunnawatt. What's that? To Mayor Wisin, to the board, to Vice Mayor Frickin, to Alderman Vaughn, to Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Alvin.
To be, uh, well, during Tunnawatt family, we thank the city for getting us through phase one, uh, the home going to be brother, uh, and, and now we have phase two, and that is him. Uh, mom says she all right, but, uh, you know, you can fool some people, but you can't fool anybody. And so if there's any chance that Alderman Vaughn can go by and talk with her after losing the son, that'd help a whole lot. Alderman Frickin, if you could go by and talk with her, that'd help a lot.
Well, do, Mr. Tunnawatt.
She says she all right, but me and her just like, we don't want nobody to worry about us, but, uh, that's not good. And so I appreciate if y'all go by and talk with her. Her hours are from seven to three. Citizen concerns, uh, traffic light at, at Marketplace is getting very nervous. Uh, it holds, sometimes people run the light, and we almost have collision that, that light needs to be checked, and that is the traffic light at Marketplace, uh, it holds, and we don't understand why it holds so long. Um, we have four businesses on Jethon Street. Uh, funeral home, and we have three, uh, have businesses. Uh, they have people in wheelchair, and the sidewalk is so messed up, it's hard to get a wheelchair person into the station. We'd like for you to look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tunnawatt. Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Saying none, we'll move to public appearances, and we have one public appearance tonight. Comment to Dunbar Pruitt. Is Mr. Pruitt in attendance this evening? Is Mr. Pruitt in attendance this evening? It appears that Mr. Pruitt is not in attendance this evening, so we'll move to Mayor's Business and the first matter of Mayor's Business, scheduled for you is a consideration of a resolution declaring the intention of the Mayor's Board of Aldermen of the City of Starford, Mississippi to apply for the 2016 homeowner rehabilitation reconstruction grant fund. The last time, we had a successful hobo, a home rehabilitation grant project was, the award was made in 2013, and Spencer, I believe that the project just closed out this year, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
This is a program that allows cities to receive grant funds that ultimately benefit residents in areas which may have a large number of structures in need of rehabilitation. It is beneficial both to the resident for obvious reasons, as they stand to benefit from home repairs, and in many cases, actually have the ability to remain in the home long term because the specifications of the program require that the, that the home is in some danger of becoming uninhabitable. It's also in the interest of the general public as the grant requires the houses to be in close proximity to one another, and a major objective is making sure that blinded areas don't ruin, because what tends to happen when there are structures, many structures in a compact area in need of rehabilitation is, of course, those devalue the properties adjacent to them and the blind groups. So those are the aims of this program. It has served us well in the past, in the recent past. This is a part program to get a qualified application in on because it requires that the homes be clustered in close proximity to one another. It also has requirements that are somewhat intentioned with one another, and that is that the home be in such a dilapidated state and it is in danger of becoming uninhabitable, and also that the home be owned completely free and clear of any encumbrances. And it is very, very hard to meet those requirements because oftentimes, when somebody is in a home that is in need of serious repair, they have leveraged everything they have, and you'll find there are liens and other encumbrances which disqualify the home from the application. The staff at the PDV runs this program in all of the counties where they work, so they're quite adept at finding applicants, and they did an excellent job last time. They oversaw our program, so I have confidence that if we have an application to be filed this night, that there will be time before. I recommend the program.
Move approval?
Motion has been made by Alderman Manor to approve of a resolution declaring the intention of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starford, Mississippi to apply for the FY 2016 homeowner rehabilitation reconstruction grant funds as presented. Alderman Manor, does that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion seconded, Alderman Lynn, all the members of Spiegel, Mayor.
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion further passed. The next matter.
Same move.
To Mr. Motion. Alderman Harper has made a motion to approve of the affirmative marketing plan for the FY 2016 homeowner rehabilitation reconstruction application as presented. Alderman Harper, does that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion seconded, Alderman Lynn, all the members of Spiegel, Mayor.
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, would signify by saying nay. Motion further passed. The next matter you have before you is discussing the consideration of adopting the proposed Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This process is now concluding. We began this process nearly a year ago. I have been most impressed with the work and the team that Alvin Thomas assembled and the very thorough process in which they've taken our community through this master planning exercise. The team at Alvin Thomas, they're really good at what they do, and they have as much expertise about what's on the cutting edge and what's necessary and functional in the world of Parks and Recreation today. What they were not experts on a year ago is this community. I really, Mr. Henry, want to commend you and your team for the diligence with which you pursued gaining expert knowledge on the desires and aspirations of our community in building a long-term master plan for our parks. You held several public forums as you built the plan to gain insight as to what our citizens desired, and you also conducted a survey to reach people who maybe weren't comfortable attending a public forum. I think this is a solid product that will serve us very well in the future, and I've asked Mr. Henry to make a presentation this evening prior to the board beginning discussion. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Saunders Graham is also here as part of our design team that did this. We really enjoyed working on this, and we hope you guys get a lot of good information out of this. A lot of you, as the Mayor mentioned, we did a public presentation of kind of the draft version of this booklet back in June. We got comments from that, and what you have before you is the final master plan. If you can't go to sleep, please read that. If you have a table, it needs propping up. It's thick enough to do that also. So I'm going to run real quickly through, hit some high points of kind of what's in the booklet, and then I'm going to focus on the kind of implementation points. So, no, I'm just going to go through this really quickly. We talked about the book, like the Mayor mentioned we did. We had three public input sessions, over 100 people. It was great. We've never really had that much public input before with a project like this, so we were pleasantly surprised at that many people, and it shows that the people of Starville care about their parks. We went through the questions. All this information is in your booklet. It tells us a lot, like the Mayor said, about what was important to the people of Starville, what they were looking for, what they wanted out of their park system. It helped us to establish goals and priorities for the master plan. We then did inventory of all your existing parks, the condition of your facilities, the number of fields you have, the number of benches, trashcans, everything. Then we took each of your parks, we did what we call service area analysis, where we mapped what we think is the radius of service that each park provides based on its size, based on what's provided at each of those parks, and then we did some, we compared that to where your residential areas are within Starville. Then we did some proposed parks and how you could increase your service radius and parts of the city that weren't being served currently with parks, and how you could add additional parks to better meet the needs of those portions of the park. Then we looked at the number of fields you have, and based on your population, based on the number of kids you have involved in your sports programs. We called it a demand and need analysis. Basically, what you and need analysis, basically what you have and what you need to meet what the citizens are looking for. And so that told us how many additional fields you needed, how many additional, uh, basketball courts, how much open space you need, uh, and especially how to meet that in the future, looking forward, not just now, but ten, fifteen, and twenty years in the future. Then, once we did that, we actually went through each of your parks and we did recommendations for each of those and for each of your parks, we also did short-term, uh, goals and long-term goals. And so we did plans for every one of your, of your, uh, parks, for instance, the sports plex, thing you can do now, thing you can do in the future, which even is radical is converting it to all baseball, softball, or converting it to all soccer. Um, we did a concept plan for each of your parks. So you've got lots to choose from. And then we got to the park operations, recommendations, and implementation. And this is kind of the, uh, the plans for the parks are really the meat of the project and this park operations recommendations, implementation is really the meat of the project. So, one of the things that we really focused on was, uh, your organizational chart for your current parks department. This is your current organizational chart. Uh, Chip Peterson, who was a member of our team, who just currently retired as the parks director for the town of Carveyville, um, advised us on this. So this is your current organizational chart and this is organizational chart that he recommends. So you can see there's quite a bit of difference, uh, restructuring responsibilities and who answers to who and, and some additional, uh, positions that he recommended need to be added. Um, he then went through and did a ten-year recommendation summary and a tier one, two, three recommendations. And so that's kind of, uh, what you had to focus on. Uh, the tier one recommendations are the things that should be focused on and funded in the next eighteen months and these include hiring a maintenance manager to reorganize maintenance operations, uh, implementing a planning process for internal and external customers. Uh, this is a really important step and one that Carville uses effectively is taking steps to implement a parks advisory board. And what that is, it's simply citizens from the community who, from their activities in the community, they hear what people want, what people need, they come together, they prioritize those and they present those ideas. So basically we have a group that is strictly focused on needs of the park, that can come up with a list of priorities and where they think things need to be funded, they can come to you and present those ideas. Um, other things are programming contracts for instructors, uh, to help that program run better, uh, including post-program evaluations to help you see what works and what doesn't work. Um, there's some issue right now with people using the fields, uh, without authorization, so some things to help control that, including lighting, uh, looking at the salaries, comparing salaries for the positions you have with some, uh, similar sized cities, uh, a weather policy, I was talking with, with William earlier, they had a softball camp and the fields got ringed on and so you need a, a weather policy to help peop- keep people off the fields during times like that. Uh, and also reviewing opportunities for contractual services. And what, uh, Mr. Peterson was talking about with that is it may be a way to have some cost savings for your parks, contract out some of your maintenance operations and that way the maintenance staff that you do have can really specialize in their maintenance and it can be more effective like that. So those are tier one recommendations, tier two recommendations are for the next nineteen to thirty-six months. Um, and really three big ones for that, first one was fund an additional, uh, maintenance personnel and additional sports coordinator position. You guys have lots going on with your sports programs and it's enough that there could be an additional sports coordinator position. Uh, the next one was begin replacing age and outdated playground equipment and then a couple of things, uh, a youth sports philosophy, an athletic field calendar that's accessible to the public so they can see who's on what field when, which fields are closed when, and then a, uh, service provider agreement and that has to do with your relationship with youth soccer, youth baseball, so that it's really clearly outlined what those groups are responsible for when they're using the city's fields and what the city of Starville is responsible for, for those fields. So that was tier two and tier three recommendations for thirty-seven to forty-nine months, so this is kind of looking really far out. Uh, an ADA transition plan, there was a lot of discussion during our public meetings about providing access, uh, within the parks, uh, handicap and wheelchair, uh, accessibility. Um, parks maintenance management plan, this is a really, this is something that they do, Mr. Peterson works on, which is inventory in all your parks, property, fields, every blade of grass, everywhere you mulch, all your restrooms, everything and really having a plan for how you address those and, and what level those are maintained at. And then, uh, creating a capital improvements project list so that the parks department can have a priority list of what they need to fund, uh, over the next five years. So, uh, those are kind of the high points. We also looked at, one of the things that we were asked to look at was this tournament level sports complex. Um, and the cost for that and the potential income that the city could get from that, that's also included in your booklet. So, I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, your comments, members of the board, Mr. Henry, Alderman Maynard.
You didn't hit this, but in your recommendation, based on the population and the number of acres per one thousand residents, you're recommending we increase our park space by about forty percent?
Yes, sir. And that's especially to meet the needs of the next twenty years with the projected population growth of Starville.
So when you looked at population, did you, did you include the student population that lives in the city, because they wouldn't necessarily be counted in a census?
Well, yes and no, yes kind of, but the need, the, the parkland that we recommend you get with is kind of not, not a huge amount above and beyond, but it helps meet that need of the students that are here part of the year. So we did consider that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work, Mr. Henry.
Further questions, you got, Alderman Walker.
Uh, I want to echo the, the mayor's comments and say thank you, uh, Mr. Henry and, uh, the, the firm and along with Neil Schaefer's firm for, uh, taking part in this, uh, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which I believe, uh, if approved tonight will be, uh, not the end step, but is the, the big first step in truly trying to set a roadmap for how we improve, uh, the Parks and Recreation component for the citizens of, of Starville. Um, it'll be a historic move if we've done this, uh, it's never been done in Starville before, having a, a plan for, uh, the entirety of the park system. Uh, it is something that I believe puts us down the, the path, uh, to knowing what we have and how do we, how do we change that in the future. Uh, having reviewed a number of these plans before, I think this is a very well put together document that I think, uh, will clearly provide a, a roadmap if we, if we choose to, to look at that, uh, as a way to improve, uh, the recreation, uh, opportunities for folks in Starville. So, so thank you and with that, Mayor, I make a motion, uh, to approve.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of the park, the city of Starville Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan 2016 as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Motion consecutive, Alderman, when, Alderman Walker, you would speak on the mayor.
No.
Discussion, Alderman Carter.
On the other hand, I, first of all, thank you, I sat up and read pretty much every word of this and I thought it was a wonderful presentation. I, I liked the, um, I guess the master road at McKee Park, I think that's a doable option. Um, I s- I think we have some major traffic issues in, in McKee Park in the evening times. Um, you were talking about hiring a manager, my position is, I feel like at, at this present time, I would like to see, um, maybe new leadership at the Parks and Rec Department. I think that we have the biggest maintenance issues I've ever seen, are the most calls I've ever had, um, things are basically falling in from the inside, they're imploding and it's, it's to a point, I don't think the leadership's down there that we need. Um, I get a lot of calls, I get a lot of people complaining about the, the basics, some of the lights are out and some of this, the number one, I think seventy-nine percent of the community was displeased with the maintenance. I think that stood out and you made a, a special point to put an asterisk in there that, that mentioned maintenance was our number one issue. I am a big fan of tournament expansion and putting that in there, but until we can take care of our own house, I don't think we need to be building new houses. And it looks like right now, over the last couple of years, we've had some of the, uh, the biggest maintenance issues I've seen. I went to the city park on Sunday for my son's birthday and there was literally water spewing out of the bathrooms and, and flooding the bathroom in the city, at the city pool. I don't know if you saw that, but, uh, it's pretty drastic and it's just to a point where I don't think the leadership is there now that's gonna take, uh, the proactiveness that I like to see. So I would like to also offer a motion, I don't know how to do this, I would like to move, uh, Mr. Peters to the sports coordinator position and readvertise to fill the, um, parks director position.
All right, so the motion is to, uh, reassign Mr. Peters to the sports coordinator position. Are you, are you making a motion to amend Alderman Walker's motion?
Yes, sir, with approval.
All right, so the motion is to amend Alderman Walker's motion to add, uh, reassigning Herman Peters to the, uh, position of sports coordinator. Alderman Carter, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we hear a second? Do we hear a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Alderman Carter.
I was gonna say, it's nothing, it's nothing personal like that, it's just that I would say, without mentioning names, that the majority of the board probably feels that we have serious issues down there with leadership, maybe this isn't the time to do this. Um, it's definitely gotta be some, some changes made, I think this is the right time to do it, I think there's nowhere to go but up from here. This is the poorest I've ever seen our fields, go down there and look at the bathrooms, go down there and look at the fields, go down and look at the fences, go down and look at the dugouts, go down and look at the lights. I've done it again and again and it's, you have to go and tell people where to go and I think there is an attitude at the parks department right now, I, this is a tough thing to say, but there's an attitude down there, if you don't tell on me and I don't tell on you and that we'll all cover each other's backs, but, uh, I promise you this, if the vote comes up, I'll vote the same. I think Mr. Peters has, uh, a great position in the sports coordinator position, but I think it's time for new leadership, something's gotta change. Uh, it's, it's a tough position to be in on this side of the table and, and I get elected to make these kind of things, but I'm saying what the majority of the public's feeling at this point. Um, it is what it is, I just, I promise you when we come back to this in six months or a year, I'll have more votes. Um, so with that, I've at least made peace with the public and they know how I stand and I'll more than likely get applauded wherever I go tomorrow and people will say, you did the right thing, but I think it's, it's time for this board to make some of those tough decisions, because I've talked to most of you and I know what you say and I can go out in public and say what you told me, but I'm not gonna do that. But it's time to make those kind of executive decisions that we've been elected to do, because if not, this park will continue to look like this and it'll continue to function as it has, I'm not gonna be for expanding any facilities if we can't maintain the, the six and a half acres to every thousand people that we have now, the park's in, in very poor shape. Um, it's just the basics, just basic maintenance is not getting taken care of and I go on the record of saying that, unless I see drastic improvements, I, I retain my position, so thank you.
All right, uh, I've, I've got several of you that wanna speak, uh, I saw Alderman Little first, Alderman next, uh, but, uh, I, I, I'm going to respond, uh, before, uh, I open the floor for those candidates. And as, uh, I was not anticipating, uh, that motion at all, uh, but, uh, since, I, I do work with Mr. Peters on a daily basis, uh, I, I, I feel the need, uh, to offer my own appraisal of his performance, uh, and, uh, I've been very pleased, uh, o- over the past year, uh, with how Mr. Peters, uh, has guided, uh, that department, uh, through turbulent times. It is not easy, uh, for any organization to undergo a governance transition as the parks department has. Uh, a, a year ago from this time, uh, they, they were coming out of the commission model and they've undergone a, a gradual change, yeah. And, uh, a number of things, uh, two things in particular, uh, have, have been addressed to Mr. Peters, uh, since this board, uh, took control of the governance of parks, uh, and that is maintenance, particularly field maintenance, and also a desire to attract more tournament level competition, uh, with, with the facilities that we have. And, uh, I believe Mr. Peters, uh, has done an excellent job, uh, responding to those concerns they've been expressed. As a matter of fact, over the last two months, uh, Mr. Peters and I, uh, have spent, uh, time, uh, on, on average, probably a couple of hours every couple of weeks, uh, where we take a park, uh, and, and we go through just the very small, minor maintenance issues, uh, call it day, day-to-day, uh, wear and tear, uh, in, in, in all of our parks, uh, and we've also evaluated the condition of our fields. I will tell you, the playing surfaces of our fields have a long, long way to go, but I will tell you, with the resources they have, the playing surfaces of our fields, uh, have improved significantly, uh, since this time last year. And, uh, to, to do some of the things that you would like to do, uh, to those fields, uh, you're, you're gonna have to make some major investments, uh, and ultimately you'll get to the decision point about whether you wanna make those major investments, uh, with the fields that you have now or whether you want to, uh, uh, build, uh, new fields and repurpose, uh, those areas where your fields are now. But, uh, they, uh, the, the importance of getting those fields, uh, in competition-worthy positions was stressed a year ago and, uh, I, I would challenge all of you, uh, to go and look at the fields yourself, uh, you know, particularly the baseball fields, uh, and, uh, if you had an opportunity to, uh, see the conditions of baseball and softball fields a year ago, I think you'll notice, uh, there is much more definition, uh, between the infield and the outfield, uh, the grass in the outfield is in overall much better condition than it was last year. And that's to the credit of Mr. Peters, uh, and his maintenance staff and the work they did through the winter months and through the spring months, uh. And, uh, in addition to that, I don't think we applauded, uh, at Mr. Peters enough publicly for the work that he's done in attracting tournaments, uh, this spring and summer, uh, of using the facilities that we do have. Our parks have hosted, uh, now, uh, four major tournaments this summer, uh, three major baseball tournaments, uh, and, uh, just two weekends ago, a, a major softball event, which, uh, Mr. Peters, uh, deserves high marks, uh, for all those events, uh, but I, I wanna talk a little bit about softball event, because I thought that was very resourceful. Uh, one of the issues that we run into on the baseball circuit is we've got more, uh, softball fields that are in newer condition and in the quads, uh, the tournaments prefer to, uh, baseball fields. They, we have challenges with baseball tournaments, because they have to bring in, uh, rubber mounds and the dirt infield is what it is, uh, which, which is not the most desirable, uh, for, uh, baseball. But, uh, what we do have that most people don't have is we have, uh, quads of softball fields, uh, so Mr. Peters went out and he attracted, uh, a, a regional showcase, uh, for college prospects in softball. He encouraged me to go out and on Friday, uh, when, when the, the players from the showcase showed up and just look at them. So I did, I rode through the parking lot and what I saw was, uh, a packed parking lot, a packed overflow parking lot and, uh, car tags from seven different states, uh, that were in, uh, but from as far away as Illinois and Virginia, uh, that had covered the event. And, uh, I understand from Mr. Peters visiting, uh, with the group that put on the showcase, uh, that they were very pleased, uh, with the logistics that they have here, which, frankly, they have trouble finding, uh, in other places, because most people don't have quads of softball fields like we do, and indicated, uh, that they look forward to returning in the future. So I, I think given where we were a year ago and the aspirations that we've expressed to Mr. Peters, uh, I, I think he has performed. Now what I expect from Mr. Peters going forward is we just saw, uh, where we should be i- in the next twelve to eighteen months, uh. I, I, I expect to be on track and on target, uh, with, uh, the recommendations for the next twelve to eighteen months, uh, so that we're in a position, uh, when it's time to take bigger steps and discuss what our five-year capital improvement plan is and where we're gonna make our major investments, uh, we've, uh, we've done the housekeeping, uh, that the plan calls for. And I have no reason, based on the performance that I've seen from Mr. Peters today, to not believe that he's going to rise to the occasion. In fact, uh, I am quite confident, uh, that, uh, if given the tools to succeed and we, uh, as a governing body, uh, make, make those, uh, twelve to eighteen month steps a priority, uh, that we'll be in position, uh, twelve months from now, while we're, we're on target, uh, so I, I could not disagree, uh, more, uh, with the suggestion, uh, that was made and, uh, I think that's something I need to share with Alderman.
I just want to say thank you for, uh, your reports are very detailed, thorough, I guess it's a great movement, uh, for the park system. I hate you got, got caught in the middle of that, so I just, I put a fog over the intent we're hitting and I, I didn't like them.
I hate you guys got caught in the middle of that, so I just put a fog over the intent we're hitting, and I didn't like, I didn't like tagging that on to that clean motion that we had. I certainly think that's something that we should have a, maybe a further conversation during the executive session at some point going forward, but not at this point in the meeting, so that's all I have to say about that matter.
Alderman Win.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. First of all, I would like to say thanks so much to the service that Mr. Peters provides to our city. This is not a measure that I was expecting tonight, and nor will I support it. Mr. Peters has been tasked with an enormous task, with very little monies. In order for the parks to be successful, let me get the elephant out of the room. You wanna be an Oxford or a Tupelo, you have to have what I call money. When I sent my son off to Mississippi State, I wanted him to be educated, I knew he had to have some money. And all of that costs money, so I said all of that to say this, that's what we will have to do to parks and recreation, invest money. You could go out and hire anybody that you want to tomorrow, but until you provide them with some money to do whatever it is what you want to get those resources there, they will be a failure also. Now let me say this, Mr. Peters, last week, if you will, will you stand up? I was at Little Dewey's, and I saw Mr. Bart Wood, and he shared with me that those tournaments that you all had down there at the park, how it had made his business explode with making some money. So he sung the praises of that, because it made his business over there at Little Dewey, where they were selling those wings for thirty-five cents each this month, so everybody go and get you some wings tomorrow for thirty-five cents and tell them that I sent you. So having said that, he said that, and I just wanted to share that with you. And again, thank you for your service, I noticed that you worked so well with the department heads, you're Johnny on the spot. Our city has, we've always, at one time, had two sports coordinators. You have worked in that position and done the position that you have, but yet, you haven't received any money for doing two positions. Then I can pass by the sportsplex at seven o'clock in the morning, and you're down there picking up trash. Tell me this, come forward for me if you don't mind. And excuse me. You all have, how many custodians do you have down there?
With the maintenance department?
Yes, just a little custodian that cleans the building.
We have two part-time.
You have two part-time, so you don't even have a full-time, but yet, all of that traffic is in and out with walking and various craft programs that they have through the day, but you all have two little part-time, and one of them is a little elderly man, is he paid from Parks and Rec or elderly program?
Well, he's paid from Parks.
So he's paid from Parks and Rec, 'cause I know he's, he's almost, you know, he's an older man. So that has always been concerning to me down there, that you don't have a full-time. So again, to say all of this, Alderman, you know, we wanna be Oxford and Tupelo as you all keep saying, but you gotta spend some money to be Oxford and Tupelo, from what I see on the TV when Mayor Shilton is, is having those commercials, it takes some money to do that. Mr. Peters, you may have your seat, and may I yield the floor at this time?
Alderman Win.
Move with close debate.
Alright, motion has been made to close debate, you have your, I can't remember what it's, two, three.
I second it. Second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to close debate. I guess it is not a motion to close debate. All those in favor will require five votes, please seek a button or raise your hand. Alright, it is unanimous, so we'll now move into a vote on the motion to approve the City of Starkville Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan 2016-Advisory, and all those in favor, please seek a button or raise your hand. All those opposed, please seek a raise your hand, once again, it is unanimous, thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
The next matter on the agenda is discussion and consideration of in-kind services in the amount of $1,057.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Mayor to approve of the request for in-kind services in the amount of $1,570 from the San Francisco Environmental Services Department to provide sanitation services during the Spiritus Motor Rally to be held August 18th through 21st, 2016-Advisory.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker, Alderman Win, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, say no, all those in favor, please seek a button or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please seek a button or say nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is discussion of
Same move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Carter to approve of a contract with the City of Starkville and Mississippi State University to complete a digital graphic information system, GIS, database for Odd Fellows Drive, Martin Luther King, Ginger Drive, and Odd Fellows University Drive, if yours has presented. Alderman Carter, does that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Win, Alderman Carter, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
City Attorney, do you have a word?
Lord, I just want to touch very briefly on this contract, we negotiated this with MSU. I asked them to take out several provisions that were objectionable per the AG opinions, they took out all but one. I'll follow up with them again today through the General Counsel's Office, and they agreed to take out the remaining provision. The remaining provision in the document now is Section 2J, so I would advise that the motion be ag'd with the words "with the exclusion of Section 2J", that section will then be removed, and the version that goes in the minutes from there approved will exclude that provision. And I've got that in writing, that's the city attorney that exclusion minded.
Without objections, and a brief city attorney's language is clerical. Say no objection, that's been added to the document, please reconsider. Any further discussion? Alderman Walker.
I just had one point of clarification. It looked, it says that the, the MSU, it'll be the entity that owns this data. Is, is that going to be shared with our, the community planning and the utilities folks that have the, that run the GIS database, so we have access to that material after we're paying for it, even though we may not be the owners? I wanna make sure that that is part of our package, that we are, that we're getting something that we're paying for, even if we're not the, the owner of the material. Is that how you read the, the contract, City Attorney?
Yes, we use the data, we just can't re-trademark it or re-patent it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank Buddy and Bill for, for working on this, I think this is gonna help clear up a lot of issues that we've been having as we inherited the cemetery and the ownership of the cemetery, so, thank y'all.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, say no, all those in favor, please seek a button or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please seek a button or say nay. Motion clearly passed. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of the request for PP 16-11 for preliminary plot approval for three lot subdivision of a plus or minus 3.28 acre parcel on the northeast corner of the intersection of Lynn Lane and Louisville Street in a C2 zone, with apparent parcel number 102J-00-114.00.
Move's approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Mayor to approve of the request for PP 16-11 for preliminary plot approval for a three lot subdivision of a plus or minus 3.28 acre parcel on the northeast corner of the intersection of Lynn Lane and Louisville Street in a C2 zone, with apparent parcel number 102J-00-114.00, and Alderman Mayor, does that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little, Alderman Win, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion?
I have a question, oh Buddy or Daniel. Can y'all say what's going, looking to go there, or is it something that can't be discussed publicly yet, or you have any idea what's coming, what they're looking to do?
They have a party interested in the southern tract. I'm not sure what's in the pot, color down, good or not.
Yeah, I was just curious, I'm David Jocelyn, I'm your partner for 4G Properties, and apparently tonight, I'm Mike Brent's trusted sidekick. Glad to answer any questions, as long as you don't get too technical. I was just curious, what, what might be looking to locate there, if you could say, or is that something you can't? Sure, sure, convenience store, full, full-service convenience store. On the corner of that south end? That's true. Yeah, just to remind you, we're, we're not developers, we're just landowners. We're not really risk-takers, and, and, you know, different from a developer who you know, carefully plans and intentionally develops property, our only purpose, and subdividing, of course, is to accommodate this sale, but we're real sensitive, you know, to who the users are gonna, gonna be, and so, yeah.
It's that that met with the potential convenience store owner, so we go over city codes and permits, landscaping aside, and is there a mayor who would be willing to do all this with us?
Motion is good. Any further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, say no, all those in favor, please seek a button or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please seek a button or say nay. Motion clearly passed. Next matter you have before you is the discussion and consideration of LW 16-04.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of LW 16-04 Landscape Waiver for requirements for interior land standing for off-road parking areas for a parking lot adjacent to Little Dewey at the southwest corner of the intersection of Lampkin Street and Fellowship Street. Alderman Walker, does that motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Win, Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the matter?
Mr. Mayor, we would like to make one comment about the parents.
Hold on, somebody's gotta yield to you.
I'm getting there.
Alright, I've got Alderman, who has the floor? Do you have the floor, Alderman?
Walker made the motion.
Okay, do you wish to speak on the matter?
Not at the moment.
Alderman May.
I'd like to recognize Moore to, to address this, yes.
The motion, or the recommendation of the, I'm sorry, I'm Molly Jackson with the moral office, representing Margaret Ann Wood and Little Dewey's. The recommendation of the Tree Advisory Committee was to approve three of the requested landscape waivers and to deny the fourth one. If I understand, those three were not in question, but the fourth one, it was our understanding that it was, motion was made to approve it as recommended, is that correct? Or was it all four?
No, it would be, my recommendation would be as, as recommended, three to one, yes.
Okay, we'd like to speak as to just that fourth one then, I won't harp on the other three. Just as a further reasoning why, we would just like to bring it up again. The fourth spot, if you would look on your map on Attachment Nine of your agenda, the three that are being approved are straight down the center, the fourth landscape waiver would be along Fellow Street, right as you pull in to the entrance. There's a landscape waiver that we're asking for, that landscape buffer, the island, it would be right there when you come in. The woods feel that that, that landscape island also still provo, provides a safety hazard for coming in and out because of the tree and the landscape area that would be there. I do have some pictures, if y'all are interested in seeing them. Additionally, the, I have some different pictures that show. Right there is where Buddy was saying in here, if I can. These pictures kinda are a little closer up.
Mr. Howard, can you go back to that previous? Go back to the previous slide.
Again, any further comments to Exhibit Four? Exhibit Four shows the better view of that, where that island goes. And what I've just handed you, the island that they're proposing would be right when you walk in, or right when a car would come in that entrance. And if you would also look at Exhibit Eight, the last page of the pictures that I handed you, that is that existing hardwood tree that's there. In addition to the safety concern that we have about that island being right there and that tree that has still, that landscape island blocking visibility, the existing oak that is there, the shade encompasses the part where the landscape island would go, and as the root system is underneath the rocks, so it still gets to the water, but if they have to install the landscape island and use agri and bore to put trees and shrubs in there, they're concerned about disrupting the existing hardwood that's there. Additionally, you can see how this hardwood comes down. You put a tree up in there, again, their concern is it's gonna disrupt the existing hardwood that's there, and take away from it and possibly have it, a tree that's thriving and has been there for years. I mean, we can't get in there and count the rings, but a tree that's been in there for years and is thriving and is established to start deteriorating where it's not at this point. So with those two items being mentioned, and then again, if, as far as safety goes, just the visibility into the property, if you look again at Exhibit Four, the landscape island would be right behind that fence right there and kind of block, and so you can see, if you look closely, there's a Ford Explorer parked in that back parking spot where it would be. If there's a tree there, it would come, you know, it would, it would block that Ford Explorer, is what we're saying, and so it would block that corner. Now, there are lights, but the woods have employees and tons of customers, everyone knows how popular Little Dewey's is, they're having a week special right now. But they're very popular, and they just wanna make sure that the parking lot is as safe as can be, and they agree with all of the other landscape ordinances, the way, you know, all the other islands were only asking for these due to safety concerns, and then this one specifically safety and existing hardwood tree, and they've also put up a fence as a pride by the T5 ordinance. And that's all, any questions?
Alderman Mayor, does that should be ready to go?
Mayor, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion to waive that fourth requirement. I know they tremendously improved the visible quality of that corner, there's a large number of very mature trees on that property already, and I think the, the additional landscaping they've done has, has gone above and beyond in improving that, that entire two lots that were there, so with that, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to, to waive that fourth requirement.
Your offer is very friendly.
Yes.
Alright, the proposed amendment, Alderman Walker, is to in addition to approving the waiver for the three landscape requirements as approved by the Tree Advisory Board, and also the waiver for the fourth landscape requirement that the advocate is requesting, Alderman Walker, do you?
Uh, not yet, I have a couple of questions before I consider that, could you please go back to the, the map, to the plan?
I'll, I'll, I'll use this.
I just wanna see the map, so I'm
Walker, then Win.
So I'm, it's clear what we're, we're talking about here, so I see the proposed site plan, I see the difference in the approved. The proposed site plan, is that, is that including the, the three of the four? So we have the one existing oak tree that I see, and so we're talking, can you point to the fourth island that we're talking about? That the Tree Advisory Board recommended that they keep and that they're asking to be removed?
Yes, this one right here at the entrance, it's shown here, and this is the second approved site plan?
Okay.
After the change during construction, when they came back for approval, and then this is the proposed site plan.
And so I guess, I guess I have a couple of questions, one, you're, you're saying that they're concerned about the oak tree. Were they concerned about the oak tree when they did all the grading for the parking lot with no tree protection around it? I would say the damage that's already been done to the oak tree has already occurred, anything we're going to do now to put an aisle around it is dressing at this point. That oak tree's very likely to, to have a, a slow death because of all the grading that occurred. So you're going to have an island there, probably in the next three or four years, it's going to have a dead tree in it. I don't see, I, I don't, quite frankly, I don't see the safety issue with the island that's proposed right by the area of Ingress-Egress. There is no car that's going to be able to park there from that area of Ingress-Egress, the only way you're gonna get to that spot is if you come from Lampkin Street. I don't, I don't see that being a safety issue. I, I, I'm assuming City Planner Havlin, if they have enough, if they've met the, the city's requirement for access along the Wippe Isle for that drive, if that's wide enough, I don't, I don't see how that being a, a, a safety issue. I think it's probably more of a safety issue if you allow that to be a parking space. I suspect that's why that the Tree Advisory Committee suggested that that one stay, and they gave leniency on the others, because I can see that being appropriate. I certainly commend for trying to keep that existing tree, and I think that's something that we should, we should always do, we're practical. But, but in this case, I am, I'm quite comfortable in staking, saying within the, the recommendation that we had that follows the Tree Advisory Committee with recommending the, the approval, waiving of three, and not allowing that other one. I believe there should be a, an island there with, with trees in it. with, with trees in it.
Alderman, when?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I withdraw my second as that, as I second Alderman Walker's motion, I withdraw that at this time.
I don't think you can withdraw it.
Okay.
You can make a motion to amend which would be voted upon.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend.
Friendly amendment, and really, truly, I'm gonna just do a little bit of housekeeping here. Friendly amendment is not something that's actually provided for in our rules. I push it along and we use it when it's obviously the consent of the body, if there's an amendment, just to make things go quicker.
Okay.
But really, the proper way to amend is to go through the motion process anyway. So would you like to make a motion to amend?
Yes, I would, I would like to make a motion that we amend that and provide a waiver as requested.
Motion has been made by Alderman, when to amend the main motion to add the fourth waiver requested by the advocate. Alderman, when, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Mayor and Alderman, when, do you speak on there?
No, I do not.
Discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By vote of five in favor with two against, the amendment passes. So we're now back in the discussion on the main motion as amended. As amended, we are discussing a motion to approve the waiver for all four requests of the applicant. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By vote of five in favor with two against, the motion is passed. The next matter on the agenda. Yes.
Is that bolt business?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yeah, let me introduce the item.
Okay.
It's a request for approval to purchase additional airport owner operator liability insurance from Star and Alderman.
Okay, Mayor, I move approval of all of the items placed under board business up to the point of item B, discussion and consideration of the proposed address changes to specific address. So all of the items before that, I move to approve all of those items.
And I will ask the city attorney, has your opinion changed on this?
No, it is not. I think it's not provided by law and it exposes the board to a legal challenge that I think it would look.
Okay.
And you've also provided the opinion that as the currently stand is not provided for by our rules?
Correct, because we've adopted the standard of the policy that says you only group two in the agenda.
So I'm going to rule out of order, and I'm also going to give you an opportunity, if you'd like, to make a motion to appeal the decision of the chair.
Can I jump in there with you? As far as it being out of order, I do think the board controls their agenda by majority vote, so if Alderman, when would like to press the issue, I think the majority vote controls.
Yeah, let me get where I'm getting and see if you can hurry where I'm going. So as the chair, I've made a ruling that's out of order, but I'm going to offer her an opportunity to appeal the decision, which it can be appealed by majority vote, so that's how the board did speak with the rest of my ruling.
As long as the board has the opportunity to vote.
Sure. And I will entertain that motion to appeal the decision of chair now.
I'm not going to appeal the decision, and I'm not going to try and take anybody's right to vote for any item, but what I will do is provide the motion to approve for each of those items.
Motion, what's the motion?
So for all of those items that are in question, I provide the motion to approve for those.
Alright, so you're, you're making the motion to approve all of those items?
Each of those items, so I provided your motion, so someone else can second them and we vote.
Individually.
Individually.
Individually, yes.
Oh, you want me to re, you just want me to methodically go, I got you.
Read each of them and I provide the motion.
So here's what we're going to do, I'll still check with you.
Okay.
I'm going to read and ask you if that's your motion, and then I'll ask the other.
Good deal.
Alright, motion has been made by Alderman, when to approve to purchase additional airport owner operator liability insurance from Star and indemnifying liability required by the aviation fuel supplier. On the win, is that the motion?
Yes.
Do you have a second? Seconded by Alderman, when he was speaking on the.
No.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Mister former Alderman, will you please come down, please? Will you brief us on the board and, brief the board and just give some background about this, about this, this particular matter, this liability insurance, just kind of give some history on this?
Okay, this is, request is coming from Eastern Aviation Fuel and Shell Oil Company, since we are now moving aircraft around on the field and fueling aircraft and handling customers' equipment and everything, so their request has had this additional insurance. The other FBO operators that have been there have had to purchase this insurance on their behalf to provide the service, so now that we are doing the service, this is what they're requesting us to do. But if we ever make a change to let the FBO, the fixed base operator, go to a lease person, we can get the remainder of the month of this one year policy reimbursed back to the city.
What is your current insurance amount, and what amount additionally are you seeking?
One million dollars.
Okay, and is this standard coverage that will cover your, any other situations where other like boards and agencies have?
That's correct.
And your board has already, has already acted and recommended this?
They did, last night.
Okay, okay. Mr. Mayor, you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passed. Alderman, when has made a motion to approve Bradford Buddy Sanders to attend the Mississippi Urban Forest Council and accept the Starfull Free City USA Award on July twenty ninth with advanced travel access, zero hundred seventy-five dollars as the. Alderman, is that the motion?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Carl Alderman, when he was speaking on the.
No, I do not.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Mister Mayor, and I'm going to speak on all these travel requests tonight, but as to this specific one, I'm going to go ahead and vote for this since Mister Sanders is seeking to go and get an award. You know, I think he's going down for at least a couple of days to get an award. I don't know why we need to spend two days down there to get an award, but I'm going to go ahead and vote for it this time, I'm not going to question it, but, and there's some other travel requests, I'm going to question them when we get down here, but I think as we get near the end of this fiscal year, we need to be a little bit more cognizant about this travel. It's getting a little extensive, the board has given a lot of latitude on it, and I think we need to curtail it, so that's my opinion. And, but I'm going to vote to approve, Mister Mayor, thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman.
Mister Sanders, I hope you have a good time on this trip, receiving the, what is it, the tree award. That's, I think that's an appropriate award for Starville, that's where we're trying to get to. I don't believe we're there yet, but I think that's where we're trying to get. Coming back to the one we just voted on a couple of minutes ago, the request was actually only for two waivers, and yet we asked, we got for four. What was in the packet, they were asking for two waivers and we approved four. So coming back to that city attorney, does that allow them to not, because assuming based on their request, they were looking to only get relief for two of the four that they requested from the tree advisory board. So now, did we just give them cake blanc for all four, even though they only requested two?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to approve to add streets to the twenty sixteen improvement list with funding for this project from the war fund, as presented, Alderman, when is that the motion?
It is, and I will not speak on the merits of any of this.
Alright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Carver. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to approve to construct a fence at the north end of Azalea Lane at a cost not to exceed one thousand dollars with the funding for this project to come from the war fund, as presented, Alderman, is that the motion?
It is.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Carver. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to approve to issue a commercial permit for Wayne Bryant and to burn clear debris associated with a construction project with the burden of per on Wayne Bryant property located in fourteen fifty eighth Rock Hill Road as presented. Alderman, is that the motion?
It is.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Carver. Alderman, mayor.
Chief, this is, to my knowledge, the first time we've had to approve a burn permit. It's awfully dry. I'm concerned.
They're not going to burn it right now. We talked about that. Actually, the firefighter, one of the firefighters is his father, so we're not going to burn it right now, we're going to wait until a few weeks till it rains.
Okay, we've got that under control.
Yes, sir, no burning right now.
Thank you.
Chief, Chief Yarborough, with all the rain we've gotten over the last, I mean, I guess we've had three large rains over the last weekend, is that, we're still dry, considered dry?
Really dry.
Good to, when do you think?
Rain and sun come right back and dry it up, so.
Good to.
Probably, maybe after this weekend, if it rains every day.
Good to, thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By vote of six in favor with one against, motion clearly passes.
One, most favor, we got one out.
Let the record reflect that Alderman, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, so yeah, we've got six voting in favor and Alderman Walker was not present for the vote. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we've got five voting in favor, Alderman, when casting the sitting vote and Alderman Walker was not voting for the vote. The Alderman, when has made a motion to authorize applying for a firehouse sub grant for the approximate amount of twenty-five dollars that SFD would use funds for this grant to purchase a rescue dive trailer and a flat bottom oak if awarded. This is a one hundred percent grant with no cost to the city as presented. Alderman, is that the motion?
It is.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Carver. Discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, Walker, did you vote on that?
I did not.
Alright, so that will be six in favor with Alderman Walker still not present. The next matter on the agenda is a request for permission for Chief Charles Yarborough to attend the firehouse. I'm sorry, Alderman, when has made a motion to permit Fire Chief Charles Yarborough to attend the firehouse, so Fire Chief's conference on October eighteen through twenty-second twenty sixteen at the National Music City Center in Nashville, Tennessee for approximately cost of one thousand two hundred eighty dollars with advanced travel ads. Alderman, is that the motion?
It is.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Any discussion?
Mister Mayor.
Alderman.
Chief, will you come down in a moment, please? Chief, and I'm sure that you have your justification for going to this trip, and I know the board recently approved for you to go to Nashville, I think, to some type of trip, and you know, I mean, what's, what are you expected to gather, I mean, and learn from this in comparison with what you went before, and how the city going to benefit? I know this is a fire chief conference, but you know, we get all these travel requests from time to time, you know, we just can't travel all over the world when these things come up for. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I just, we're trying to wash the money, just kind of give me a little background on this.
On this, this is actually, I want to go with this because of grant rate. There are two sessions, the former FEMA director that worked at FEMA on the grant rate, so this will help us grant rate, better to get grants. That's number one, that's for.
Yes, sir. Well, that's good, Chief, and we appreciate your applying for the grants, and hopefully we can get some of those and get Fire Station Number Five moving with some of these grants, and just kind of keep us briefed on these things. Appreciate your hard work, Chief. Mister Mayor, you have the floor.
Mister Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Chief Yarborough, thank you so much for your service, and thank you so much for going to Nashville, do good in your classes, and again, thank you for your service. I don't have any questions because Chief Nichols just traveled on official city travel in St. Louis, and I didn't ask him any question, I don't recall anyone else asking him any question. So thank you so much for your service. You have the floor.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to approve of the purchase.
Got one out.
Alderman, when has made a motion to approve of the purchase of firefighter strike gear from NACO at a cost of fourteen thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars with funds coming from the state revenue. Alderman, is that the motion?
It is.
Any discussion, any, do I have a second? Motion has been seconded by Alderman, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to authorize the advertisement of the position of lead line foreman in the Starfull Electric Department as presented. Alderman, is that the motion?
It is.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to authorize the advertisement of the position of lead line foreman in the Starfull Electric Department as presented. Alderman, is that the motion?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to approve of the hire Michael Reese to fill the vacant position of foreman in the Starfull Utility Department subject to a six month probationary period as presented. Alderman, is that the motion?
It is.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By vote of five in favor with one against, and Alderman Carver not present, that motion passes. And Alderman, when has made a motion to authorize to fill the vacant position of sergeant in the police department as presented. Alderman, is that the motion?
It is.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to approve of the transfer of two thousand four Crown Vic to the airport to be used as courtesy car as presented. Alderman, is that the motion?
It is.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. And prior to opening the floor for discussion, let me just say on a personal note, this is the old Crown Vic, and I grew it for six years, there is a little piece of my soul that goes to the airport with the Crown Vic. Mister Lincoln, please take good care of it. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to approve of entering into an agreement with the Office of Highway Safety in the area of a one hundred percent reimbursable grant in the amount of ninety-five thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars to be used for the DUI officer full time salary, overtime for DUI enforcement, travel, and funding for LEL lunches as presented. Alderman, is that the motion?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman, when has made a motion to approve of entering into an agreement with Office of Highway Safety in the area of a one hundred percent reimbursable grant in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars for overtime and funding for LEL lunches as presented. Alderman, is that the motion?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Mayor, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman Win has made a motion to approve of the travel for Evangeline and Courtney Rolfe in Class One, Rubus Lantos, or Tension Grading in Jackson, Mississippi, on August third through fourth, two thousand sixteen, with advanced travel not to exceed eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars as presented. Alderman Win has made the motion-
Yes.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Mayor, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman Win has made a motion to approve of Terry Kemp traveling to Franklin, Tennessee, to attend a TVA rate review meeting on August third, two thousand sixteen, a cost not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty dollars as presented. Alderman Win has made the motion-
Yes.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion been seconded by, involved in Carver. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Alton.
Yes, so, Ms. Kemp, you don't have to come up all the way up. I remember you're on a board. What's the name of that board you're on, that advisory board, or that has the regular meet?
I serve on the TVPPA board, which is made up of all of the local utilities that serve out of me from the TVA, and also seven states, our corporation.
Right, and this is conjunction with that, right, Ms. Kemp?
This, this particular meeting is the year to review the TVA shares with all of its customers or distributors on rank projections coming up next year.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp, thank you.
Further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Alderman Win has made a motion to approve of Bobby Gillen and Joel Murphy traveling to Jackson, Tennessee, to attend a TVPPA line walker construction lab three, August twenty-first, July twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, and a total cost not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars for both with advanced travel as presented. Alderman Win has made the motion-
Yes.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Mayor, any discussion, any discussion-
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Mr. Kemp, just very briefly, when I looked at this, the costs look rather enormous here. Just, it's the per diem, just really that expensive, the hotels, twenty-two hundred dollars in, twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per person. Is that, you know, of course, let me look at this, they're gonna be there for five days? Okay, I guess that would explain a little bit then, okay.
And it is, a lot of that is for the training itself, and this is part of our progression plan, part of the TVPPA line and French Frank, Frank program, so it's a five-day training.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp, appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes, and that's gonna take us all the way back to what was originally I to A, B, and C, and the board business without a D, without a B, without a C. Any objection, any objection, saying none, extended board business. Meeting will now come back to order. Next matter you have before you is the consideration of approval to activate the traffic signal at the intersection of Loxley and Lincoln Green.
Same move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to activate the signal at the intersection of Loxley Way and Lincoln Green. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Carver, you would speak on the mayor.
No, sir.
Discussion. Any discussion, any discussion, Alderman Mayor.
Edward, briefly, what's the logic of rolling this back on? Let me rephrase my question. Is this gonna cause conflict getting on and off campus in the mornings and in the evenings?
Alderman Mayor, as you know, we did the study back last year, and the results from the study were it was not warranted based on traffic volume and flow from the side streets would be Lincoln Green during that study period. Since that time, there's been numerous complaints from residents and business owners on Lincoln Green, expressing some concern about the safety getting out onto Loxley Way, especially during the peak hours, morning particularly. And so, at the request of Alderman Little, we've added this to be put back on and to go back into operational mode, similar to what it was pre-study, with one caveat that we will, if the board does approve for it to be turned back on, that the timings for Loxley Way will be extended as long as possible, which will, will create a situation for those cars coming up to the intersection on Lincoln Green, that there maybe have to be an extended wait time for those. But trying to find that balance between all the requests from the entire neighborhood, while also trying to achieve the original goal, which was to make the corridor more efficient. And so, that's, that's kind of where we are.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Little, thank you. I just want to touch on that. The reason we didn't pull him down six months ago was we wanted to kind of monitor it, because we were scared we may be putting him back up and we'll see how it played out. And as Edward said, we've had multiple complaints from business owners and residents that live in the apartments. It's not so much an issue in the mornings, which is good, everybody coming, you know, coming to go to Mississippi State to work, but it, during lunch hours and later, as traffic's more intense coming in and out of there, it gets busier. The ball-bouts, and we were gonna get a little more aggressive than Edward was with those delineators, but with what we had there, it was just, they were speeding through there, and I know that's coming back to a law enforcement issue, but there were several near misses over there, and the complaints were growing, and we just felt like this was the best thing, and hopefully it's not gonna have a negative impact, because we're all gonna leave it extended on Loxley Way just as long as we can. But they will have an opportunity to get out and they'll be safe, and they try to cross from Lincoln Green also. That's the reason behind it.
Right. Alderman Win.
Alderman Little, as well as city engineer, you know that I spoke favorably about that, because I'm one of the near misses that was over there. And one Saturday was Super Bulldog Weekend, I think it was, I was over there that evening, and Saunders Ramsey had to assist me in getting out in the street, that's how the traffic was. So I'm so glad that we, or we'll be putting this light up hopefully tonight, that these board members will support that. Thank you so much. I yield the floor.
Further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By vote of six in favor and one against, and I have Walker casting the dissenting vote, motion passes. The next matter on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of the proposed address changes specific to the addresses located on Jepson Street. Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of the proposed address changes to specific addresses located on Jepson Street as presented. Alderman Little has made the motion-
It is.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the mayor?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, Alderman-
I just have a question. Mr. Sanders, have the, have the potential owners of these lots that are going to have their address changed, are they fully aware of the potential address change, and are they in support?
This is the first I have heard.
Mr. Green, they're, they're on board? Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of personnel requests continued from the July fifth meeting. Alderman Mayor, turn the direction of this discussion over here.
Yes, sir, Mayor. In the last meeting, we approved the proposal to increase the minimum salary for all city workers to ten dollars an hour by July first of two thousand seventeen. At that time, I said that I would come back to this meeting and let you know how that actually broke down between enterprise funds and the general fund. For the enterprise fund sanitation is going to be a cost of four thousand four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and six cents. For the utilities division, it'll be a cost of two thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. For the general fund, it'll be a cost of ten thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. In addition to that, we also approved the increase for the court clerks. That'll be a cost of ten thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars for that as well. And the proposal that was in the packet is how each of those would break down in order to avoid salary compression issues.
Further discussion.
And there's no action needed, it's just clarification, so.
Any further discussion, questions, comments for Alderman Mayor, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, the next matter before you is a request for approval to accept the two thousand seventeen M dot multimodal grant. Discussion.
Same move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Mayor to accept the two thousand seventeen M dot multimodal grant for MM dash zero-zero-six-eight dash zero-eight-one-seven for tea hanger apron in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand six-hundred-and-fifty dollars with a local match of eight thousand dollars as presented. Alderman Mayor has made the motion?
Yes, sir.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Mayor, do you wish to speak on the mayor?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of T and M Steel Change Order Number One.
Same move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of the T and M Steel Change Order Number One in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand six-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the two thousand seventeen multimodal grant MM dash oh-six-eight dash oh-eight-one-seven as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the mayor?
No.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of the Clearwater Consultants Incorporated.
No approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of the Clearwater Consultants Incorporated work order in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the two thousand seventeen multimodal grant MM dash oh-six-eight dash oh-oh-six-eight dash oh-eight-one-seven as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the mayor? Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of approving travel for Buddy Sanders. Oh, I'm sorry. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of the bids for the Lafayette-Lamkin ADA Intersection Project. This has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of the bids for the Lafayette-Lamkin ADA Intersection Project, accepting the low bidder from Prairie Construction, including alternate one. Authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the approved contractor and authorization to utilize account oh-oh-one-six-oh-oh-nine-oh-three-five-one-six for any cost above the project budget as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the mayor?
No, sir.
Alderman Mayor.
Edward, what's the timeline on completing this project?
Good evening again. The notice to proceed could be issued probably as soon as within about ten to fourteen calendar days. He'll have to get his performance bonds together, execute a contract, and I believe that the contract time, Alderman, I could be wrong on this, I think it's forty-five days. But we're looking at late September, probably, final, everything completed.
And option one gives us protective railing all the way down that street?
All the, all the way down Lafayette's-
West side?
On the, on the west side that ties in to the existing railing near the intersection of Main. And the decorative railing would match what's already there.
And what happens to the stop sign that's just stuck in the ground?
It will, it will be now located within a landscape island and be pushed further out into Lamkin Street to increase site visibility.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Edward.
Alderman Little.
I'm looking forward to this change. It's gonna be a huge asset, an enhancement to that area. One question, there's gonna be ADA right there on that west side corner, right?
Yes, sir. The northwest corner will have an ADA ramp to go from street level up to the sidewalk right there at Larry Mullins' businesses. There will also be a new ADA parking space on the east side of the street, right in front of the Korean Church entrance in that area. And then there will be an ADA ramp to get from that parking area to the Lafayette Street sidewalk, and then you could cross Lafayette to the, to the new ADA ramp. But you can also go south toward First Baptist Church, if you're planning to go that way as well.
What kind of traffic flow issues are you anticipating during construction? Are you gonna have to close the intersection for any length of time?
I feel like we will do, be able to keep the road open ninety percent of the time, not even ninety-five percent of the time.
Thank you.
Alderman Walker.
I'm also glad that this project's gonna happen. Looking at the bids, it looks like we got a good bid. I'm hopeful, because the second bid was basically, this is half, the winning bid will be half the price of the other bid. So I think it's gonna be, we're gonna be relying on the city engineer and other folks to make sure that we're getting a quality product for, for the price that we're getting. When I saw those two bids, that was the first thing that came to my mind, is did somebody bid wrong? Or not, since they were just so wildly different. So, but I expect that we're going to maintain quality control on, on this project and get the project that we know we're paying for, for that price, so.
Yes, sir. And, and we have worked with Prairie Construction before numerous times. They did our safe route to school project. They're a very reputable company out of Tupelo. I think, to your point about the bids, I think it's indicative, that, I was talking with someone about the same thing. I think the number of bids, only getting two, and the wide variety is indicative of the construction environment we're currently in right now, especially in our area. It's very hard to attract people to bid on, on projects like this. And our budget, when we put together a cost estimate, it was pretty close to what the bids came back at. So we feel good about it, have no reason to believe that the contractor won't give us a quality product, but we will certainly be, be watching it very closely. Thank you, sir.
Further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter you have before you is a request for approval of claims dock. Motion has been made by Alderman Mayor to approve of the City of Starfield Claims Dock at all departments, including the Starfield Utilities Department as of July twentieth, two thousand sixteen, for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, as presented. Alderman Mayor, does that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Mayor, do you wish to speak on the mayor?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By vote of six in favor and one against, and I have Perkins as casting the low dissenting vote. The motion passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval for June financial statement.
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of the June financial statements as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Mayor. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the mayor?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval to advertise for, request for proposals for municipal depositories.
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of advertising for requests for proposals for the City of Starfield, Mississippi, municipal depositories from interested financial institution for fiscal years ending September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, as outlined in Sections twenty-seven dash one-oh-five dash three-oh-five, twenty-seven dash one-oh-five dash three-five-three, and twenty-seven dash one-oh-five dash three-six-three of the Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two annotated as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do air a second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the mayor?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval, approval to advertise to fill the vacant position of Senior Executive Administrative Assistant for the Community Development and City Board. Discussion. Discussion.
Mr. Sanders, if you'd like, will you please come forward? Will you speak to us about that, please?
Sure. As all of you are aware, the Executive Administrative Assistant to Community Development, the Board of Alderman and the Boards and Commissions resigned effective July fifteenth of this month. And there's a request, of course, to advertise for the filling of that position.
Mr. Sanders, how many boards and commissions is this person responsible for, for the minutes?
Eighteen.
Total of eighteen. And if you're without this position, who is going to be responsible for those minutes?
Well, I, I don't know. I would have to meet the mayor and go over responsibilities.
So that's eighteen boards and commission. And let me, for the record, there's no one else in your office that is assigned this task, am I correct?
As of right now, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. I yield the floor.
Discussion. Further discussion. Any further discussion? You have no motion pending. Any further discussion, any further discussion, seeing none, no motion was made. That will exhaust discussion on the topic. The next matter before you is a request-
Oh, wait, Mr. Mayor, he was asking-
Just, just one other matter, separate of this matter. It was my understanding I would be able to present my personnel requests for next- It was my understanding I would be able to present my personnel requests for our next fiscal year, is that, will that take place tonight?
I think we need to move that one to executive session.
Agreed. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, let me say this. Of course, we didn't vote to address this position tonight. I'm very concerned, because a lot of calls have been coming in, and for whatever reason, they are not being answered or transferred who they are supposed to, because someone may be away from their desk for whatever reason. I'm very concerned. I received a telephone call today from a business with a potential retail development matter, because no one was answering their telephone. I don't, certainly, I don't want Ms. Vicki to be overwhelmed, I, you know, I know that she does what she can, and she works for your office, but I'm concerned, as a, as board members, we don't have anyone, and I'm concerned about those eighteen boards and commissions. That certainly places us in an adverse situation. Those minutes must be kept to keep us out of trouble with the Exeter's Commission. I'm very concerned about that. Counsel, what do we need to do? Because we don't have anyone to take these board minutes. What do, what do we need to do as a board? How would you advise us to address that?
I would advise that these city-ordained commissions nominate someone on the commission to take minutes pursuant to state statute, which really only require the time that the board met, the people who are in attendance, and the votes and motions taken, so it's really a bare-bones exercise.
Okay.
And I think that's something that could be done by committee members.
Okay.
That would be my advice under these circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, you have the floor at this time.
All right, the next matter before you is a request for approval of the advancement of apprentice lineman Stephen Wade from apprentice lineman level one, or level L? Is that level L or level one?
Level one.
Level one, to apprentice lineman level two in the electric department.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the advancement of apprentice lineman Stephen Wade from apprentice lineman level L, or level one, to apprentice lineman level two in the electric department, subject to a six-month probationary period as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, seeing none, all of your favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval for the Police Department to submit an application for funding in the amount of thirty-six thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars seventy-one cents to Blue Cross Blue Shield.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve the Police Department submitting an application for funding in the amount of thirty-six thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars seventy-one cents to the Blue Cross Blue Shield in the form of a grant for gym equipment and funding for their camp as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir. Captain Outlaw, if we get this equipment, where are we gonna put it?
Well, we're hoping to have, uh, maybe a possible room in the, in the new building. I, I had been privy to the cuts that the chief and Gary Schaefer have done, so that may be out now, but we, we also have the firing range that, that we have a building there, and we can keep equipment there also.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, seeing none, all of your favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval to accept the lowest and best bid received for the July twenty-sixteenth through December twenty-sixteen sources supply.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the lowest and best bids received for Ju- July twenty-sixteenth through December twenty-sixteen sources supply in the electric division of Starkville Utilities as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, seeing none, all of your favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization for Starkville Utilities, payment not to exceed eighty thousand dollars for emergency rebuild pump.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Wynn to authorize Starkville Utilities to execute a payment not to exceed eighty thousand dollars for emergency rebuild of pump, well, casing, and associated tubing for well number seven for Mississippi Code Section thirty-one dash seven dash thirteen as presented. Alderman Wynn, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Wynn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, I do not.
Uh, city attorney has to recognize.
Mr. Kemp, can you just articulate the nature of the emergency, please, for the record?
Currently, our well is down because of a failure of our pump. We pulled it out, and right now, if we were to experience another well failure, it would really call a critical situation for the city. This particular well is located in Bluefield Community. Currently, it provides part of water to that area, but also supports water back into the city. The pump itself is sole sourced, and we pulled it out, and know what needs to be rebuilt along with the casing, and so we're entering into this winter, and I mean, into the summer, so we're really talking about half production of times when we need the water, and so that's the nature of the situation right now. It's, the time is really, 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 uh, critical.
It's your opinion that it is an emergency?
It is.
And that the delay through bidding process would be greatly detrimental to your department and to the city?
I know.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? City of thirty, that's your recommendation?
I would just add the following language to the motion to make sure we're statutorily implying on, especially this particular issue, the suggested motion, read as follows, like you've already done, and then tag it by saying, "And at the board meeting next following the emergency repair, documentation of the repair, including a description of any commodity purchased associated therewith, the price thereof, and a detailed statement of the nature of the emergency and repair shall be reported to the board and placed on the minutes." And I've reduced that to right.
Alderman Wynn, do you wish to so amend your motion?
Yes.
Without objection, seeing no objection, the motion will be amended as the city attorney just read. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussions, seeing none, all of your favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. At this time, it sounds like we've now got one item to consider for executive session. Do I hear a motion to go to the closing? Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to go to close session, determine whether there's a need for executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, seeing none, all of your favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. At this time, I'll ask that the public vacate the premises so the board can begin close session deliberations to determine whether...